Meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. Roll call, Mr. Tepfer.
Mrs. Bissinger. Mr. Prueman.
Here.
Mr. Hellegarne.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Dr. Heitz.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To thank everyone for coming, we do have exits abounding. We have one to your right and one to your left. Okay, a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Are we gonna...
Oh, is it need to be amended?
The agenda? Do we need to do that?
No, it's corrected.
Second.
It's been corrected.
All right, Mr. Tepfer.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prueman?
Yes.
Mr. Hellegarne?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes. Next up, minutes of approval for the minutes of policy meeting, special meeting, HR committee meeting, and previous regular meeting on April 24th.
I move to approve the minutes of the policy committee meeting of April 18th, 2017, the special meeting of April 20th, 2017, the Human Resources Committee meeting of April 20th, 2017, and the previous regular meeting of April 24th, 2017.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer.
Mr. Prueman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hellegarne?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes. Correspondence.
I have a few, sir. From the Alliance for High Quality Education, of which this school district is a member. They say that our contributions to the organization's efforts to achieve adequacy and fairness in Ohio's school funding system is appreciated. They speak in the letter to us about House Bill 410, which imposes arbitrary procedures on school districts to counteract chronic absenteeism. They've worked to eliminate some of that, and they've inserted in the bill's final version exemption language for districts with good attendance records, and that would be our district. The Alliance is actively providing input on aspects of ESSA. Mr. Smith and myself have participated in that plan, working with the state superintendent for instruction on that committee, and so we are committed to that. And also, the Alliance is working very hard on the governor's budget proposals, particularly record-low growth caps that are involved in the budget, first-ever initiatives to reduce or eliminate guarantees, cuts in transportation funding, escalator reductions in TPP reimbursements, and flat funding of the peer pupil base count, or cost, among others. So what this letter is suggesting is that as a member of the Alliance, we continue to work with our lobbyists in the state to influence the governor's budget to reduce negative impact on our schools, and so the Alliance thanks us for our contribution to that work. Also, the last time we were together, there were guests who came and spoke eloquently and with a high level of respect for the administration regarding the Nagel Middle School schedule, and I wanted to let you know that we have had follow-up meetings with the music department, and I have a correspondence that was given to me by the department chair. And rather than read it all to you, the final comments, where I can tell from listening to you speak, that you are a teacher at heart and that you take each decision seriously. I so appreciate that and look forward to seeing our district evolve. I appreciate your time and thought in this matter greatly, and that has been the message I received from my music colleagues today as well. We are very grateful, so we have come to some conclusions on the Nagel Middle School regarding the choir program. And I know that there are individuals in our community and potentially here this evening who have interest in theater program at Nagel Middle School, and I wanted to let you know that when this process started, the Director of Curriculum Instruction, Natasha Adams and myself, met with a representative from the theater department, and we talked about innovation and things that we wanted to do at the high school level, which we put into place, and we've added a film class to the high school, which is directly related to that particular staff member, but also has touches a more innovative style of teaching when you think about theater and production. We also do have, and I know that there is some confusion on this, we will have a theater encore option for students at Nagel Middle School. The changes that we've made to the middle school schedule haven't necessarily changed what happens with the production of the plays, because it has always been a club endeavor, from what I understand, so we'll still have the same amount of theater productions, and we also still have the club. One of the things that we're doing, though, that is a little different, the theater class that was at Nagel Middle School will be changed. It used to be about 30 students were able to get into that course just based on the selection process, and with our fusion classes and working with Mr. Chad Weddle, who will be helping instruct at the middle school next year, we will be able to expose more students to the theater course. It won't be for as an extensive amount of time as the other 30 students were in there, as intensive, but Mr. Weddle will be able to work across teams of students throughout the entire building, so we'll be able to expose actually way more students to theater and some of the thoughts about theater, and hopefully give them incentive to continue in that, not only at Nagel as a part of the club, but also as they get into high school. And as Mr. Weddle's program, and I should say our district's program, continues to evolve, we want to have those students become not only involved in theater production, but in other productions that have to do with film, productions that are more digitized and more digital, more 21st century style. And so I think some of that miscommunication may have happened, could have come from me, and I apologize for that, but we did create also as a response to some of those meetings, and that's been sent out, it's on our district website, as well as has been sent out, and that is a frequently asked question document that was created regarding the Nagel schedule. So I'm happy to say tonight that we've come to some conclusions. The choir will be a full-year option, the Nagel Theater Program will be as it was, except for there will be a theater class in the school that is different than was in the past, but will have exposure to more students than what we've had in the past. And that's a follow-up to commentary that came to our board last meeting.
Mr. Tepfer? I'd like to bring up just one thing. Today was the 6th Grade Olympics, a huge high point for the district. Mercer came out on top. I did want to recognize four individuals, though. George Mouchenheiser, from Sherwood, jump roped 225 times in one minute for a new record. We had four records set. Gus Foley of Sherwood ran the 50-yard dash in 5.49 seconds. Evelyn Fitzgerald did him one up and ran the 50-yard dash at 5.3 seconds. And Sidney Earls of Air set a boy and girl record with 25 pull-ups today. So it was a fantastic day after two false starts with the rain. We did get it in, and it was a beautiful day. All right. Moving on. Now, procedures for public commentary, this is not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public. We do welcome your comments. We have quite a few forms up here. If anyone would like to speak, you can fill out a form. Some people like reading through all this. You have plenty of time to read through all of the rules and regulations. Because of the number here, I will limit it to three minutes per person, and that will be coming up. Next up is graduate, candidate for graduation, Mr. Overby.
We will be going through a much larger celebration this Sunday, but we're super excited that Rakan John Talamas is here tonight to receive his diploma. Thank you, Rakan, for your hard work and your perseverance to finish up your high school education at Anderson High School. We appreciate all your hard work, and I know your family's here today to celebrate with you, so we're super excited that you are here. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the granting of a high school diploma to Rakan John Talamas.
I move that we approve the granting of a high school diploma to Rakan John Talamas.
I second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mr. Prueman?
Yes.
Mr. Hellegarne?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Congratulations. Next up, combination recognitions, the FTC team, 1003-0-7-SIGMA. Oh, absolutely. Find every great student or great parents. If we got the parents stand up and give them a round of applause. Next up, item 6.1, the 7 Sigma Robotics Presentation.
In the local news today, the Inquirer, on Monday, May 22nd, there was a large story about the Anderson Robotics Team educating others, and if you haven't had a chance to see that, board members, I'll pass that down. It talks about the influence of these young men on more youthful students throughout Anderson Township and bringing STEM activities to them and opportunities to learn about robotics in the many ways that the courses that they've had and the experiences that they've had have helped them on their journey and how they can expose other kids to that. At the Ohio State First FTC Robotics Championship on February 11th, 7 Sigma Robotics, the gentlemen that are with us here tonight, competed with 31 other teams from Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, and Pennsylvania, finishing as a semifinalist team in robot performance and winning the Rockwell Collins Innovative Award. This award celebrates a team that not only thinks outside of the box, but also has the ingenuity and inventiveness to make their designs come to life. This judged award is given to the team that has the most innovative and creative robotic design solution in the FTC game. Elements of this award include elegant design, robustness, and out-of-the-box thinking related to two-design. The team was also awarded the Bronze President's Volunteer Service Award, an initiative of the Corporation for National and Community Service, and administered by Points of Light for devoting 545 hours of inspiring and for future generation of students in science, technology, engineering, and STEM. Two of the team's members were also awarded individual service awards for hours above and beyond the team's effort, and those two individuals were Andrew Moats, he was a gold winner, and Austin Moats, who was a bronze winner, both students at Turpin High School, and Nick Norton, who received a bronze award, and he is a student at Seven Hills School. I've got so many pieces of paper congratulating these gentlemen. Here we go. So the FCT team, this evening, we are pleased to introduce and congratulate Anderson Township First Tech Challenge Robotics Competition Team members. These gentlemen are from Turpin, and when I say your name, if you would please, just raise your hand so everybody in the crowd knows who you are. Austin Moats, John Mays, Jackson Todd, Zach Rana, Andrew Moats, and Rohan Rindani. Also, from Anderson, Tassos Manganeras, and from Seven Hills, Nick Norton. I'd also like to thank the coaches, I don't know if those two gentlemen are here, I think I saw, but Martin Moats and Mike Norton for all of their work, and those gentlemen are here with us this evening. We'd like to congratulate you all on, you know, it's your second year, and you are already known as a state, national championship team, and it brings great pride for us to have you here this evening to show us a little bit that we might not know about robotics and what you have done. So, go right ahead.
First off, I'd like to say thank you, and we are 7 Sigma Robotics, a team active in the Anderson Township area, and mostly comprised, entirely comprised of members who have grown up in Forest Hill School District, although not actually affiliated with the school. We belong to a league called FTC, which stands for First Tech Challenge. FTC involves mid-sized robots like the one you see before you, and grades 7 through 12. FTC is part of a large mother organization called FIRST, which is an international nonprofit with four, an international nonprofit with four sub-leagues that strives to create extracurricular opportunities for STEM-oriented children that may not have them. So we compete in competitions, there's several different levels of competition. There's regionals, there's state, and then super regionals, and after that, there's the world competition, which we made it to, not this season, but the season before that. And there's two ways to advance, obviously through robot performance, but as well as through what are called judge awards. At the beginning of each competition, each team will go through a judging process, which involves them going into a room in front of a panel of judges, and they'll do a presentation about the robot, receive them, and based on the information that they provide, they qualify to participate in awards, and depending on the provision of the award, they can advance to the next level of competition through this. The reason they do this, it may seem interesting, they not only promote robot performance, the reason they do this is because they also like to promote soft skills like presentation and communication with team members. So as Nick said, there are two parts to the robot competition. There is natural robot performance and what they call outreach. So outreach is where teams go and do presentations to anybody that doesn't know about FTC and FIRST. So we go to schools, our community, and businesses to tell them what we are, what we're meant in the case of businesses, and then get schools aware of them in cases like this, so that when people say robotics competition, then the first thing they think of is FTC instead of battle dogs. And so our goal this year is to make First Tech Challenge and FIRST very widely known in Anderson Township and specifically in Forest Hills. So we've gone to Mercer and Air already and done hour-long presentations there to almost 100 kids, and then we have ones at Mercer today and Wednesday, as well as we've met with multiple principals from elementary schools and the middle school. In addition to that, this year we will be partnering with iSpace. They're not only the first affiliate for a lot of the small activities out there in the town, which I qualify as, and a volunteer service award, so we're going to go to the state competition this season and be able to see what happens. So this year's actual robot performance was called the last. It's a 2 and 1/2 minute competition, starting off with 30 seconds of a long pause period, where teams gradually shoot over the ball through the center of the orbit, and you put the ball each on these cycles of the... Next is two minutes of direct throw period, where teams continuously shoot ball through the center, as well as put the ball through again, and in the last 30 seconds, teams are automatically able to hit the ball. Please remember. To achieve these tasks, we had to design, build, and program a robot scratch. We didn't use a kit, we manufactured and pulled the parts that you see on the robot today. We used to let the engineering process be iterated on every run, and it would lead to a final. As we went today, we recognized how fortunate we are to have this activity, and we have the next school environment, and it's good to see you doing it. And we also have to educate ourselves in periods that are difficult to... We get that, and we have more time than time, and we get to do more of this. Hey, water's down, but I think it's a lot bigger than this. So in a normal competition, we're demonstrating what is known as the off portion. So here, like Andrew said, you pick up balls off the field and then shoot them into the basket in the middle, and then at the end, you place the yellow ball on top. Okay. Yet another part of the robotics competition is participating in things like this. We've been to several presentations like this, probably, what, you say six or seven? Yeah, and it's worked every time. So I guess now I can be able to see the balls get to the goal, but the idea is, these spin really fast, and balls, when balls are put into it, they run. We can, however, so you have, taking this ball and placing it on top with a lift. So with the sidewalk, you have to, you're allowed to touch it, so we don't get any balls here. So we'd like to say thank you for introducing our robotics presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to contact us. We, all of our members have pamphlets with our email and our Twitter if you'd like. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would also like to add, if you have questions, go ahead and ask them. Any questions?
How often do they take you to build this, what possible for time span?
So the season starts in September, or early September, they'll give you a challenge with game pieces, obstacles, and tasks you have to achieve, and you have, and then you can schedule your competitions, the earliest would probably be in December, and the latest would probably be end of January. So you have until whatever date your first regional competition is scheduled, that you get a robot functioning, and then you're supposed to advance on that competition and iterate in between, iterate until your state competition, which is scheduled around August 18th, that day you iterate. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Just so you guys know, that whole little ball thing there, that's how my day started today, so it happens, but thank you very much. That's awesome, and it's a lot of work, a lot of hours to make those things work, and ingenuity on your part, so thank you very much for coming here this evening. We do appreciate it, we wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item 6.2, the 2017 Celebrate Teaching Distinguished Educator Award. Mr. Weddle?
Can I have Leah Suter, please, come up? Ask anyone who has had the biggest influence on you in your life, and chances are that after parents or a significant other, they'll say, "Well, there was this teacher." Great educators are remembered for nurturing, engaging, motivating, and instilling a belief in students that they can reach their goals. Celebrate Teaching is a commitment of Batel for Kids to celebrate, support, and inspire great teaching, and the organization's goal in this particular area is to recognize and support educators who have had a powerful impact on students, colleagues, and their community, to inspire future generations of educators, and to thank all teachers who have dedicated their lives to making a difference for kids. Since 2012, Batel for Kids has recognized nearly 250 outstanding Ohio educators with the Celebrate Teaching Distinguished Educator Award as representatives of excellence in the teaching profession. Leah Suter will be honored at a ceremony during the Annual Educators Connect for Success Conference in Columbus on June 8th this summer, and she will have the opportunity to share her experience and expertise with the field through presentations, blogs, and more. To achieve this level of excellence, you have to be nominated, and there were things written about Leah as a Nagel math teacher that are important, and Mr. Vandemere, who is the building's principal, proudly wrote these items. She strives to meet the needs of each individual student through differentiated instruction based on data from the classroom. She works to make each student feel comfortable in her classroom, safe and secure. She engages her students through interactive learning that is the cutting edge of math education. She continuously works to better understand the needs of children through her own professional development, and then shares her learning with her colleagues to influence not only her class, but the entire building. She is an exemplary teacher who has tremendous impact on her students, colleagues, and the community, and so it is my pleasure to recommend to the Board of Education that we honor you this evening by giving you this award, or this certificate of commendation, for being named a Celebrate Teaching Distinguished Educator of the Year. Congratulations.
I move to commend Leah Suter for her outstanding achievement and present her with the certificate of commendation.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mr. Hellegarne?
Yes.
Mr. Prueman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up with item 6.3, Carrie Lee, the 2017 Women's Flying Pig Marathon winner.
You've kind of been on the circuit as of late. It's a good thing, though. Beautiful smile. Congratulations to Carrie Lee, Anderson High School teacher and cross-country coach, who finished in 2 hours, 53 minutes, and 55 seconds, claiming first place in the women's division of the 2017 Flying Pig Marathon. Carrie competed against people from all 50 states and 20 countries to take home the first-place finish, and we are happy that you could be here this evening to receive but another commendation and award for this feat, which I know you have worked on for many, many years, and this was a culminating experience for you, and hopefully next year, when you win it for the second time, we'll be right back here doing it all over again. So I would like to recommend that the Board commend Carrie Lee for her outstanding achievement and present her with the certificate of commendation.
I move that we commend Carrie Lee for her outstanding achievement and present her with the certificate of commendation.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hellegarne?
Yes.
Mr. Prueman?
Yes.
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Now we're up to public commentary. I have six, what we used to call green cards, it's only no longer a green or no longer a card. Any other one else? We'll start with Mr. Michael McIntyre.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the Board, give my thoughts on Forest Hills School District position on school photography. As you know from personal experience, as a youth or parent, or even a grandparent, school pictures are still a highlight of a child's school year. We are McIntyre Glutz Photography and have been photographing students at Turpin High School for nearly 15 years, and we recently discussed the upcoming school year with the principal. He informed us that the school district wanted to unify through one photographer. Without further discussion, we understand that it was an approach to go with life touch that somehow sufficed... that somehow surfaced about three years ago in our discussions with them. We had met with Christine McCormick, the IT director, who also has responsibility for photography, and learned that we could submit a proposal within a year or two and would be allowed to keep our current relationship with Turpin and Nagel and other schools that we photograph. We came back one year ago to learn that Christine was mistaken and that the agreement was longer with Life Touch and continued through the spring of 2017. At least, that's what she said last year. Again, we have tried to reach out to Christine and the superintendent and others that know of our work and try to organize an audience to discuss our capabilities and the unique needs that each school has for photography, all the while matching the scope of what we can do for what they need. We have been unsuccessful in all our attempts to be heard. It seems to me that the Forest Hills School District, as other school districts, should request competitive bids from the public to provide these services to their schools. It would allow a better matching of services with the community, with the community's needs. Recently, West Claremont High School selected us as the photographer for their school, but they requested a request for a proposal, and we beat out Life Touch and other local competitors to become the vendor of choice for the new West Claremont High School. We obviously can handle the workload, but this has not been given the opportunity to submit something in the public arena. We love serving our community and work through, and we do work readiness initiatives through several of our high schools. And we participate in Spark Days at Wilson Elementary School, where my children attend, as well as at Nagel Middle School, and will be at Turpin next year. We want an opportunity to provide a proposal to Forest Hills local schools regarding school photography and know that when you see the comparisons, you will be astounded with how a competitive bidding process can be good for the school district and allow you to match up the best services for the best products for the parents and families in your district. We suggest Forest Hills local schools publish an RFP to request proposals to get qualified vendors to propose services that are in need by all of our schools in this district and allow a competitive bidding process to prevail.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jenny and Megan Goodlett, Natalie Nunez, O'Nezzo, and Mackenzie Rulock.
Hello, my name is Jenny Goodlett. And my husband and I have lived in Anderson Township for 20 years now with our three children. Our oldest is Megan here. She now is a junior at Anderson High School. But when she was in the sixth grade, she came at IHM, she came to me and said she just didn't feel like she fit in anymore. And so we looked into other possibilities, one being Nagel. And she came home and she loved it. Her reasons were she could use a laptop, and she was allowed three choices in extra classes, not the core classes. And so she attended the theater class with Mr. Weddell. And I have these three ladies here who would like to kind of express their feelings on having a choice in three different classes at Nagel.
To kind of add on to what my mom already said, being a really shy child already and going into Nagel, which is a huge school, I was already very nervous. And the theater class with Mr. Weddell became, like, quickly became my favorite part of the day. And not only did I enjoy, like, that class in particular, it helped in my other classes because when I got to go to that class, it helped me throughout the rest of the day. Throughout the rest of the day, I just felt like if I can get through today, then I can go to this class and I can have fun and be myself. And I was really devastated when I could only take one quarter of it. And I really wanted to take it throughout the entire year.
I was in the same position as Megan. I was very shy when I came to Nagel. And I think it's just an awkward time for everybody going through middle school. It's kind of a place where you find what you like to do, what you want to do in high school, what you want to do with the rest of your life. And I came in and I was put into Mr. Weddell's theater class. And I was very excited because I've seen all of the productions since I was three at Anderson. And I got put in that class, and I loved it. It gave me a lot of confidence, and it let me just find a lot of people who liked theater, even people who just took the class because they had an interest in it. I think theater is a very good thing to teach kids because there's a lot of different elements of theater. Not just performance, but technical positions as well.
I just wanted to say, I didn't go to Nagel Middle School. I went to Guardian Angels, and we didn't have a theater class offered to us. All we had was chorus and after-school theater productions. And I took Mr. Weddell's class at Anderson for all four years. And I feel that I really benefited from it. And I feel that if I would have had the opportunity to participate in it in middle school, I probably could have grown even more. Because I, like the other girls, I also struggled with confidence, as most middle schoolers do. And theater has always been a place that has been very accepting and welcoming. And I felt that I could grow as a person and with one of my favorite things to do. So I think it's a very beneficial thing for kids to have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I just ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just was wondering how often will each team? I hear that you said they'll be working with Mr. Weddell with teams of students, and just wondering how often they will be working with him?
I can tell you at this particular moment in time, we're working with him on that to try to find the most beneficial way to do it. It isn't totally complete yet, but it is going to happen, and we're working to accomplish that.
Great, thank you.
Next up is Tim O'Toole.
Hi, I'm Tim O'Toole. My daughter Delaney is a junior at Anderson. You've taken some of the wind out of our sails. We were misinformed in terms of the scope of what was going to be available at Nagel. But I'll just reiterate that I think the community that has been built around the theater department and how it really does begin for most of the kids at Nagel. There's a young man right now who's, he's a baseball player. And when he showed up at Nagel, he had theater on his schedule. He never would have looked at theater, never would have considered choosing that. But because he was involved in it, then he got his best friend involved. And now both of them star routinely in the program over there. And they have a community to belong to. And 180 students were involved in the Spring Musical production. There's 180 kids who had something to do for three months after school. And that's huge. And a lot of that really begins, that love of that begins at Nagel because of that program. So I'm happy to hear that the students will still have a touch of it. I would just hope that it's a strong touch. And I can even see where the Fusion programs could incorporate theater. There's a lot of technical, a lot of science. The way Mr. Weddell does it specifically involving the film, I think that could be a huge part, and I think that could be a benefit. So that's all I have to say. I'm glad to hear that they're still going to have a chance to touch on that. And hopefully, they can keep the community going strong.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kim Amrane.
Hi, my name is Kim. I'm here also on the Theater Point to echo, appreciate the clarification. And I understand that the Fusion program will incorporate a touch, but I'm worried about just a touch. When I look at the current frequently asked questions form that I'm familiar with, I appreciate that clarification. I see the semester encores that are being offered and the full-year encores that are being offered. And they do not include the theater class or the film class. Those allow those kids to build a relationship. So I have a senior, actually one who was selected as Student of the Year this year, and a freshman at Anderson High School. Both of them were able to build a relationship with Mr. Weddell that continued. I have a continuing concern about the mental health of our students. I think that, I also am focused on those core competencies that enable us to employ students down the road with the skills. When I think about that theater class and that film class, actually got to star in one of the films done by the productions, that ability to write, to communicate, to team-build, to problem-solve, those Cs that you're focusing on are critical to the success and employment of our students long-term. I'm also concerned about those students who are at risk, lost. We had a five-hour theater banquet on Thursday night where we heard from our seniors. And many of those seniors talked about that feeling of being lost. We have a current student in the program right now who claims he would not still be at school if it was not for this connection. I understand there's still a club. I understand that there are still productions. That is not the same as 30 students at a time in a full semester class that enables them to connect and bond and team-build and to see a future path. So my students participated three times in the design class, digital design, beginning keyboarding, ceramics, drawing, guitar, history of rock and roll. Those were Nagel encores, which may fit into those visual arts offerings, music offerings that you're maintaining perhaps some of. Those do not accomplish the same results and connectivity, relationships, core competencies of employability and skills that are necessary for the future of our students and the mental health of their relationships as they go through that really tough time of being a middle school and connecting them with the high school program. So I ask you to reconsider reinstating. I understand that may require an additional position and some additional funding. And that's a big ask for the district. But I ask you to consider adding those encores back into the program for both theater and film. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Matt Rulock.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Grillo. Just want to talk about the Nagel encore classes. First, a little bit of background. My wife and I both live in the Forest Hills School District. My wife attended Summit in Anderson. And we're both mechanical engineers, so we really do value the academics. We have two children. One is a sophomore at Anderson, and the other's a sophomore at the University of Kentucky. So you probably wonder why in my situation, we are, I'm here. I'm here because I'm concerned my students are, you know, won't be affected by this, since they're already out of Nagel. My daughter is heavily involved in Anderson Theater and Chorus. And she's had an incredible experience at Nagel, taking advantage of the encore classes and also Mr. Weddell's theater classes and the language classes. So you can probably see, well, maybe where am I going with this? Are we trying to train professional musicians and theater people? Well, maybe that's a little bit of an outcome. But more importantly, you know, my daughter is not going to major in music theater in college. But the experiences that she's had at Nagel have been invaluable to her. And I don't think just having these as the extracurriculars would provide the same value. A better case for this is my son. He's currently a sophomore at the University of Kentucky, majoring in engineering. And I can remember how disappointed he was when he figured out that he was going to be in Mr. Weddell's class. He was terrified. But now, he remarks that that was the best class that he ever had. He learned public speaking and how to get up in front of people and speak. And he now has leadership roles in his fraternity. And in conversations, he frequently references that Mr. Weddell's class that has really helped him for that. So I've read, you know, the questions and answers about the schedule. And I think it's well-written, had some great points. The one thing that I think that the Forest Hills School District has is a great balance. I think we have great academics, great arts, and great sports. In my opinion, we don't dominate in any one area. And my concern is that going with the encore classes that we're going to tilt too far in that other area. The one thing that I gleaned from the document was that we wanted to provide more time to help students meet the rigorous 21st academic standards. As being an engineer, I can really appreciate that. But I hope this doesn't mean that we focus on how to take the standardized tests because I think there's too much focus on teaching to the tests. So the current Nagel system provides great academic preparation, but while also balancing the chance to explore different areas. And I do worry about pushing too much academics at the pre-high school time and not allowing exploration into other areas that can have adverse effects in the growing concern of student mental health. The encore classes at Nagel are a great way to foster these interests in a variety of areas that will work together with academics to create well-rounded students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Noah Wadley?
Good evening. As stated before, my name is Noah Wadley, and I am a current senior at Anderson High School. I'll be graduating this weekend. And to start off, Nagel Middle School is a very strange place. It is the beginning of an interesting transition from pre-adolescence to adolescence, eventually to adulthood. And going to Nagel was terrifying, to be frank. Being with the same group from Summit Elementary for six-plus years was awesome. But when you get to Nagel with all these other schools, it can be scary. And interacting with new people was awkward for me. I was not always a bubbly personality, and so it was hard for me to fit in. And when I saw that Mr. Weddell's class was on my schedule, I was so excited because my brother, who was four years, or who is four years older than me, had the opportunity to act in the productions at Anderson. And so I was very excited. And so beginning the class was awesome. But at the beginning of my seventh year, I had a seizure, which was extremely out of the blue. And it was very hard for me and for my family. And following that, two months later, I had another seizure, which led to the diagnosis of epilepsy. It's very hard to be with your peers and know that you're different and know that something feels wrong. But when I was up on that plywood stage in Mr. Weddell's classroom, you kind of forget about all that. Epilepsy has stayed with me up until now. And even this past year, when I performed in Sweeney Todd, two weeks prior to the show, I had another seizure. And it was devastating. And I was angry, and I was furious because a lot of things that I had tried so hard to do and try, I had tried to stay seizure-free for so long, and all of that came crashing down. And I was angry. I don't know if many of you saw Sweeney Todd, but Sweeney Todd is a very angry character. And the fact that I was able to play him and I was able to express all that anger and frustration was a sweet release. After every show, I felt content and happy regardless of the situation that I was in. And all of that, all of that emotional expression that I had learned by my senior year and my final fall musical, it all started at Nagel with the theater class. And I could not thank all of the educators enough that were participating in that and all the students that I was with. It truly changed my life from seventh grade until 12th grade, almost graduation. And so I ask that you consider extending the timeframe of the class and rather, well, in middle school, you know, you think about, this is an odd metaphor, but when you have ice cream, you don't want just a taste. You have a taste, and you're immediately hooked. And you just want a little bit more, just so you can savor it and experience it. And I ask that you allow students to experience theater rather than just taste it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Long?
Good evening, everybody. I kind of just jumped into this just now. So I just, I jotted down a couple notes. I'm going to try to use some of those improv skills that I learned in my theater classes and those public speaking skills that I also learned in some theater classes. And give you guys a little taste of what I'm thinking about our theater and film programs. So real quick for some context, like I said, my name's Nick Long. I've been in shows since seventh grade. And my first show was in second grade at Anderson High School with the Music Man. I wanted to say, and last, on Friday at our banquet, I received the Achievement Award, which I believe goes a good... which I believe goes a good way in saying that I've been very heavily involved in both the theater and the film programs at Anderson. Unlike a lot of my friends here, I did not take the theater class at Nagel. I ended up finding my way through that, to theater through the Nagel shows, and I'm glad that I did, because it's been a life-changing experience for me. It would have been easier to make that connection had I been in the theater class, and I certainly support keeping the theater class at Nagel. I think it goes a long way in developing students. Just briefly, I'd like to touch on some of the skills I believe that theater and film bring to our students. Public speaking is certainly one of them that I think we've touched on a good deal tonight. I wouldn't be here talking to you guys about why I think this is important if I didn't have the public speaking skills and confidence that theater has given me. It also gives you confidence. That was my next bullet point. It's a very obviously creative field, and developing that creativity is something that students absolutely need going into the future. No matter what job you're in, no matter what career path you take, creativity is extremely important. The community and the support that develops in our theater programs and in our theater classes is hugely significant. The mental health aspect is certainly, certainly there. During our, what was supposed to be our Sunday showing of Hamlet, when we learned what happened to David Han, we all came together as a community and supported each other and talked about what was going on and our own struggles with whatever issues we had, we've had, and it's really important to have that community. Real quick, because I know I'm running low on time. It's great to explore theater, and I think that having a class certainly lends itself to exploration. I'm glad you guys aren't tired, is it, I shouldn't say you guys. I'm glad it isn't entirely going away, and we'll be involved in our fusion classes, but I think that a more in-depth look would be beneficial. It blends English, social studies, music, visual arts, dance, and acting all into one piece, and it certainly develops leadership. I would like to thank you for your time and for your continued support of the theater and film programs, as I believe they're some of the best programs in our district, and there's a huge future. Thank you.
Now we have district updates from the superintendent. Item 8.1, All-Day Kindergarten Update.
Good evening. We wanted to take a few minutes to update the board on the all-day kindergarten program. As you recall, the implementation of the all-day kindergarten program was scheduled to be a gradual implementation when the bond was passed in 2014, but due to Mr. Johnson and his team making sure that the kindergarten classrooms are going to be ready next year, we've moved forward with doing a full implementation next year, and we are excited about that. So in terms of the staffing of the all-day kindergarten program, if you recall, we put a survey out last year, and what came back was we'd have probably a maximum of 500 students accessing kindergarten next school year, per the survey. The actual numbers as of this evening are 453 registered, 301 all-day kindergarten, 152 half-day. A letter was sent to families in the beginning of May stating that those families that had registered by May 1st were guaranteed to be in their home school, and we had some very happy families. Obviously, that's very, very important to them. We have reserved the right to place students where it is most appropriate if they register after May 1st, but obviously, our ultimate goal is to place students at their home school. What may affect that is we tend to have an influx of students enrolling in August, late August, and we just need to make sure that we have the correct staffing for all of those students in all of our buildings and actually enough classrooms in all of our buildings. We have a couple buildings that have two, or I'm sorry, five kindergarten classrooms that the rest have four, so we just need to make sure that we can put the kids where they need to be. After looking at the number of students accessing the all-day kindergarten program, we currently have a need for 8.5 additional teachers, but also know that this number may increase slightly as families register towards the end of August. Again, we seem to have an influx of that. As you recall, Forest Hills School District receives no funding for the all-day kindergarten program from the state of Ohio. Thus, the need for tuition in order to offset, it's not going to fully fund, but it will offset costs associated with all-day kindergarten so that we can maintain other programs, all of our other programs in Forest Hills School District. And the last thing I will mention is we have a scholarship committee that has met and awarded approximately 10 families with financial assistance. The scholarship program is designed to help families with the financial hardship, as our goal is to allow all families to access the all-day kindergarten program. The financial hardship we are looking at with the scholarship committee, and Mr. Fruman had mentioned that at a previous board meeting, to make sure that we're helping our families. So the scholarship committee will meet again this month, and we will be accepting scholarship applications up until August 31st, so those families that have not registered yet still have that ability, and they can simply contact me, and we will get the application to them. So at this time, if there are any questions?
I've got one. How is the all-day kindergartening impacting our offerings of morning and afternoon kindergarten? I mean, we're having, in both, are we often able to offer both morning and afternoon?
We, yeah, we have, where we're at right now is, I believe, we have two, I've got it here, we have two elementaries. Yeah, we have right now two elementaries that would be offering just one half-day class, which will be in the AM. The remainder of the elementaries, if there are two, will be assigned just like previous years, where you have the AM street and the PM street, and our principals will be, will be addressing that. So the two schools that just have one half-day kindergarten class, it will be AM. I will tell you that those two are also in the bubble. If we have a few more students enroll, then we will have both, but that's where we are. Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Next up, I meant to mention this before. I do appreciate all the speakers, and I know we have a riveting agenda, 11.4 Utility Easement Number Two. But if you, if you so desire to leave, it will not hurt our feelings at all. You're more than welcome to stay, but I like giving everyone that opportunity to get out while you can. So just wanted to bring that up. All right, next up, item 8.2, Calendar Revision.
Before you get out, or before you decide to leave, I want to thank the students for your attendance this evening and for your genuine responses to what you believe is important in our programming. Beyond the theater program, I can tell you that I'm very proud to be associated with you in the way that you presented your thoughts this evening. So thank you very much, and you need to get out of here. Go ahead, because you have finals coming up, so thank you very much for being, but you're more than welcome to stay. Calendar 8.2 is the calendar revision. The attached Revised 2017-18 Academic Calendar reflects a new starting date of September 5th for the upcoming school year for students in grades 1 through 12. Preschool and kindergarten will have the phase-in days, and that will be announced by each independent building with their parents. And I would like to remind members of the board that this is, this reflects a two-day change in the schedule. It is not a full week. So I know there was a question about that out there. This just means that we will start two days later, and it really is to ensure that we are absolutely 100% prepared in our facilities to accommodate the needs of students on the very first day of school. So I recommend the board approve the Revised 2017-18 Academic Calendar as presented in your information.
We don't consent, or not yet?
Not yet.
Move to approve the calendar as amended.
Second. Mr. Depper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Hummelgar?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Hyatt?
Yes.
The next item is 8.3, Membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. All schools shall be members of the Ohio High School Athletic Association and the Constitution and will abide by the Constitution and by laws of sports regulations, and we once again want to be a part of that so that our students can enjoy OHSAA competition and have opportunities for college participation. And so we, I recommend the board approve the district's continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2017-18 school year.
I move that we continue our participation in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Second. Mr. Depper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hummelgar?
Yes.
Dr. Hyatt?
Yes.
And in item 8.4, starting with the June 26, 2017 meeting, the Board of Education meeting location, I recommend that we change from our central offices to Nagel Middle School at 1500 Nagel Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45255. And I recommend the board approve this change in location of its regular board meetings to Nagel Middle School, as stated again, starting on the June 26, 2017 meeting.
Salute.
Second.
Mr. Depper?
Mr. Hummelgar?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Hyatt?
Yes.
I will need reminders on that. Next up, Board Discussion, 9.1.
I'd like to lay a bet that you go to this building.
I guarantee you, I'll go here, I'll go to the other building, my way all the way around. I'll be starting about 10 minutes. That's exactly right. You'll have plenty of time to get there before I pound that gavel, I guarantee that.
So I haven't said much during board discussion at different times, but I have something pretty important to put out there tonight, and I'll start with the end first, which is effective May, what are we, May, yes, May 31st. I will be resigning as a board member. And I've been thinking about this for several months, and it's, I keep kicking the can down the road, but finally, I had to rip the Band-Aid off because I keep coming back to the same place. And what, when I ran for the school board four years ago, I was a business owner, and that was it. And since then, I'm a business owner, I'm a school board member, I'm a high school athletic director in another district. I still have four kids and a wife, and, and what has started to happen is I have, through, through nobody telling me this, but I've started to feel myself like I'm cheating some of the duties. There have been more conflicts than I think there should be, so. And the thing that smacked me in the face in the last week, there were really two things, and this has been happening, happening more and more regularly, and I know that as my term was going to end in November anyway, with the fall seasons coming up, it's not bound to get less once the fall seasons start. Last week, we were having a finance committee meeting with Rick and his team, and for the second time in about a month, I showed up in the offices a day early. I was the only one down there looking for my meeting. And then the day that the meeting was supposed to be, I was unable to be here because of conflicts with, with one of those jobs. And then tonight, there's another, there's, you know, double conflicts tonight, and I love every second of being a Forest Hills School Board Member. I have, I think working in another school system and this school system at the same time, for the most part, has been fantastic, to see the way both situations run, to be able to have, continue to work with educators who care about kids, continue to work with kids every single day, all that type of stuff. So I got in it for the right reason. I've done the very best that I can. I just keep having this feeling that somebody that maybe can get a head start on a board run in November might be able to come in and be passionate and not have the same conflicts and the same things to fight with. So that's why I'm choosing to do that at this time. And I don't know if Forrest, or Randy, or anybody has anything to share as far as timelines and how it works, just so you know. But again, I want to say thank you to everybody for their support, for everybody who voted for me. I think we got a lot accomplished in the last three and a half years. There's no doubt about it. A lot to be proud of, there's no doubt about it, and I just want to say thank you, so.
I want to speak on behalf of the board to say how much I appreciate working with you, on a personal and a professional level. We do joke there's four things that a board, big things that a board does, new superintendent, operating levy, a bond issue, and a new treasurer, and you got three out of the four, unless Rick has some more announcements.
We gave Rick a raise, I know.
But, but no, it's, it's been, it's been a great three and a half years. As far as how we're going to go forward, there can be a formal vote to accept a resignation. I am not going to do that. The time for the resignation will be May 31st. We can start accepting applications as soon as now, with that being the effective date. What not formally voting on it does is, in the event of a catastrophic change in the next 10 days, Tony will not be obligated to leave, okay? So it just keeps options open. I don't anticipate anything. He's thought long, hard about this, but, but strange things happen quickly sometimes. So we, Bill Dieters told us about, that we can't accept the applications before June 1st, but if the, with, with the effective date being May 31st, but the official timeline for the process does start officially on June 1st. We have 10 days to make the applicant, or to gain applications with the next, or with the actual appointment being done at our next regular meeting, which will be in June.
June 26.
June 26.
And it has to be done by June 30th, so anyone here that's interested, or anyone here that knows somebody that is interested, please spread the word, please have them get us their applications. We'll review them, we'll likely have some interviews and be voting on this in June 26. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. I'm speaking as one board member, but I would be surprised if we weren't going to require anybody to be appointed, be also submitting their petition to run in November, the expectation. And Tony's being very selfless here in doing this now, so that somebody can become an active participant in the board through the end of the year. We don't, I mean, if, if Tony's going to make that sacrifice, we ought to put it to good use and have somebody that's willing to, to serve and run the next, next election.
I do have the data from, this, this did happen one time before, when we actually had a board member that went on to the State Board of Education. That was in 2005. There were 12 people who put in their applications, which is more than double any time, any election we've ever had, so. But, but they're, I think they're.
Exactly, but whatever.
Exactly. Candidates for graduation, Anderson and Turpin High School Class of 2017. So Mr. Overby, are you the high school representative today?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
I'm very honored to be up here today to recommend to the board to allow 558 students from Turpin and Anderson graduate May 28th. Obviously, I'm more aware of the success at Anderson, but I follow closely the success at Turpin that we see at board meetings and on Twitter and things like that, and I think this graduating class of 2017 has set the bar very, very high, both in the academic, in the academic world, performing arts, visual arts, and athletics. I've seen hard work firsthand, grit, perseverance, leadership, and all the things that are some of our students at Anderson tonight spoke about. So at Anderson, we have 276 graduates, potential graduates, and at Turpin, we have 282, like I said, for 558 on Sunday. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the grant diplomas to the candidates listed in the attachments, and any student who enroll in Anderson or Turpin High Schools after this date, subject to the satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements as noted for graduation.
I move to approve the granting of diplomas to the candidates listed in the board documents, and any students who enroll in Anderson or Turpin High School is after this date, subject to satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements as noted for graduation.
Second.
Third.
Mr. Depper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hummelgar?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Hyatt?
Yes. Excellent. See you Sunday. Next up, Business Operations.
Well, we'll start off with the facility update. Just want to run through a few things. We're going to, we're getting ready for quite the busy summer. Some of the big things for us is.
Some of the big things for us is at both high schools, if you've been by either one of them, there's a lot of activity. It's going to, our big thing for us is trying to coordinate the summer logistics for all the activities in the, in the buildings during the course of the, the summer break. At Air, we're getting ready to install the playground, we're working, we're going to be relocating playground, we're working through on that. Maddix, we've got the office and media center that we're going to try and get ready for opening in the start of the school year, as well as all the interior classrooms and the core part of the building are being done at, at this point. Mercer, one of the big things, kind of a struggle for us, is we're working on some moisture mitigation in the new kindergarten area, we think we've got a solution for that, but our target there, as well as Summit, is we plan on having both those buildings done, including these new kindergarten areas before the start of the school year. Wilson, we've already started demolition there, ends with a lot of locations, there's been a lot of time spent over the last couple of weeks on relocation of utilities, with, with Duke Energy, whether it's Cincinnati Bell, whether it's Time Warner, now Spectrum, on relocating these things. We're still working through trying to get things firmed up as far as the temporary office space for transportation at this point. So Dave, you want to?
Mine are pretty pictures of all of what was just explained. We'll start with Anderson, and as Mr. Johnson said, there's quite a bit of work. In fact, I calculated about 175 people are working on our six sites right now in total, and I will report next month, because we'll start the summer cycle, and my guess is we'll probably be about 400 or 500 people working on those six sites. Right now, everybody's just kind of poised to, to start the race, if you will. But this is the front of Anderson. In April, obviously, there was still a wall right behind that piece of equipment, and right now, there's a gaping hole, and the foundations are in. Foundations should be completed today, and they'll start blockwork probably yet this week. This is a picture from the classrooms on the bottom, to now what will become the office spaces on top with the walls blown out. Anderson, rear site, the foundations are complete, on the upper picture, they had just gotten the ground cleared, and on the lower picture, all of our foundations, our foundations are kind of special because the dirt in that area is very poor. They have actually done what's called geopiering, which is not used a lot, but in poor soils, you can literally bore a hole in the ground, fill it with compacted gravel and four-foot spacing, and then put a footer on top of that. So we peered through all this dirt and are now ready to start footers at the multipurpose addition. This is a pretty dramatic picture because of the waterproofing that's been put on the exterior of Maddix, but we are poised for brick, and brick should start early next month, well, next week, at that site. Be a grand entrance, as you know, the buildings that have been completed, the entrances are all pretty spectacular, and this will be, again, pretty much spectacular inviting entrance. This is a picture of the work inside of the office space, which had been vacated at start of school, and you can see it just is progressing on pretty, pretty rapidly. In, in one month, you've gone from block walls to stud walls that are now, have all the utilities in them and are pretty much ready for drywall. This is just kind of a, a group of pictures saying, it's pretty much doing the same thing. The space that you're looking at, though, the upper picture shows the ductwork is in place, and that's the new media center that's in the addition, so it's coming along well as well, the roof is practically dried in. We had made a, a completion of a phase at Maddix last month, and had moved into another phase, and so this is the next four classrooms. This is actually the early childhood kindergarten area, which will be ready for start of school, and be finished before, pretty much close to the end of the school year here. Mercer, this is a kind of interesting picture, this is the old music area that is being renovated into a better music area. You can see the entrance into, into both classrooms on the upper picture, and the lower picture is just, you know, last month, still being demoed. Again, another picture of that, that space. This is the Summit classrooms, as Mr. Johnson said, the only thing that, that, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. This is Summit classrooms, which are now occupied, if you're correct. Yes, we made the transition last week, and we are now into another four classrooms. This is interesting, this is a main picture of the elevator shaft on the upper picture, which is now completed to the top of the building, so we can't keep up with the work that's going on so rapidly, which is nice to say. Turpin, you can see in the lower picture, dramatic difference, the upper picture has most of the roof in place, the new gym facility, the roof is in place. No one piece of work still remaining, the roofwork is behind the gym, which is the connector to the existing event entrance. This is the office area, so this will be, when you come to school, this will be where you come in to the new office. And again, you see the canopy being created. And yes, the man on the roof, anybody familiar with OSHA is here, he has tied off properly, so I'm not too excited. And the nice thing about this photograph is, is that the lower picture on the left is, is from, is kind of just how much light is going to come into this new office and offices area, the other picture happens, but just to give you an idea, the same way metal studs are up, roof is practically dried in, ductwork is in place, mechanical equipment is, is moving on. This is the ramp area that ties the lower roof level of the addition to the office area addition, so it's steps and ramp combination, and the next picture shows a little bit better in the upper right. This lower left is an example of the long stretch of windows that occur in the office area, so it'll be very light, because the offices couldn't get windows, the windows, the light is coming across the hallway, so it'll be very lighting space. Lower right is the music room, ductwork in place, I'm going to make up that the blockwork is a special block for acoustic. This is an interesting space, you just, you can't really understand what's going on here, other than there's a lot of work, but where that man in yellow shirt is standing is a ramp that's been created to get around to the pool level, which did have a handicapped ramp that was way steeper than it was supposed to be, so architects did a really good job of finding a way around, and, and probably next month, we'll have a better photograph that shows that ramp going around. New boilers in place, contractors created this little plywood walkway so they can come from behind Turpin where the boilers are with pipe work and bring it into the, to the rooms that they're working on across the hall. This is the science rooms, we were fortunate here to be able to move some, some kids around, and we were able to get half the science rooms, gives a nice jump for the summer cycle. On the right-hand side are the excavations that were done to put the pipe work in place for the science case work. On the right-hand, left-hand side of the picture is the case work, the, the pipes are covered up in concrete and the utility that continues to be installed.
So it's not going to smell in the basement of Turpin anymore?
No.
Good.
Several things were done to correct that, one was a new grease separator outside was installed last year, that would help that as well as Quite a change dramatically on this, all the roofing is on, not completely done, but you can see the, this area is the new office space here, so that's the offices, and this is the gym space, give you some scale. And then, I like this a lot because this is the beginning of the new building being used by tearing down the old buildings, so you can't really show it, the gym being demolished. This doesn't tell you a lot unless you know, so this is the office area here, and the office area here, and right now, this is the yard with the chiller, the transformer, the generator, all that's it, and there's now a new brick wall that hides all that, so. Quite a bit of work in the last 30 days. This is gym, last month didn't have a roof on, this month, oh, it has a roof and has the ductwork in place. This is the office area, I apologize for the condition of this space, it doesn't look like that today. As you see, the roof is on, the utilities, the sprinkler system is now running, it's on. Any questions?
Dr. Roff, please.
I have, I have one for you to talk about a little bit. Over at Mercer, we've experienced some trouble with moisture. Can you talk a little bit about that and what we're finding there?
So the, so we believe that, well, we know that, let me start with, typically, when you build a slab on grade, which means it's on the ground, particularly when you build a slab that's going to be below the surrounding ground, as in the case of Mercer's music room, it's below grade. You put a piece of plastic, a vapor barrier, and, and the vapor barriers are being installed currently in any new spaces in our district. Not only is it a piece of plastic, but it's also sealed, so moisture can't come up through. We didn't have that at Mercer, and the area that has been renovated was the old locker room, which had quarry tile on, so you didn't know that you had a moisture problem because it was a quarry tile floor, and it would kind of evaporate more so than if it were on VCT, on, you know, on square VCT or on carpet. Because on carpet, you may develop mold, if it's on VCT, that tile will pop. On quarry tile, it can exist, and you probably don't even know that it's happening. So as we started to develop that space into the next thing, which was the kindergarten space, and the floor tile was removed, we couldn't get the floor dry enough, the concrete floor dry enough, to be able to apply the VCT. The, it's a very, the glues today are so sensitive that if there's any amount of moisture, everybody runs and hides, and your warranty's at jeopardy, because they're, they'll expect the tiles to curl and pop up. We've gone through about four iterations of how do we fix this problem? One of the things we did is outside, we did some grade work to keep the water from getting to the building. We need to do a little bit more, we think we need to add a drain tile, so that if it does get any closer, there's a higher water table, that can be taken away by gravity. And then there's several products that have been suggested for the floor, the first two or, one was carpet, and everybody kind of felt carpet's not a good solution, because you could develop mold, you could develop, you know, things that will get into carpet and you wouldn't know it. So we like to stay with the kind of flooring that's been designed, to do that, we have to seal that floor, and so those are the products we're looking at. One was a two-part assist, a two-part, like an epoxy system, very expensive. We're now looking at a one coat system, and I think tomorrow or the next day or so, we should have pricing for that, so. Once that's down, we'll be able to put the flooring down. The impact that it's had to the program is, is that we were, we would by now be in another set of classrooms working, and we've had to defer that, so it just made the summer a little bit larger in terms of the amount of work. Anything else? Very good.
It's just, people have left, they didn't want to listen about the easements, so.
I know, this is the first one, too.
Their, their loss. 11.2 is utility easement for Anderson High School. This is in order to allow Duke Energy, we have a lot of work going on in the Anderson campus. One of the utility easements is for the installation of the upgrade of the electrical service that will serve the mechanical equipment in the, in the rear of Anderson, and that's what this one is, so. It's right, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the granting of easements as shown in the attachment. 11.3 is District Builders Risk Insurance, this is something we renew on an annual basis in many programs, this is a part of what the contractors bring. Decision was made early on in the project that we would go out and price this and provide this at a cost savings to the district. So the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the Builders Risk Insurance carrier with a $25,000 deductible per the attached premium proposal through Berry Insurance the period of June 1st, 2017, to June 1st, 2018. The second utility easement for Anderson High School, this is because we have to relocate electrical service in the front of Anderson High School with the installation of new driveway. They do have to be two separate, the documents are almost identical, but they have to be two separate, unique easements. I'm actually hand-delivering these to Duke tomorrow, so we can stay on schedule with the work. So the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the granting of this easement as shown in the attachment. I might have, Legals reviewed both, both of these utility easements. 11.5, Tia. Each year we come, this is for informational purposes only, but we're required to, for the certification of standards governing types of food and beverages sold on school premises, so. Tia Strass can kind of walk you through a very brief thing.
I hope. As of July 2011, Ohio Revised Code 3313.814 requires each school district board of education and each chartered non-public school governing authority to adopt and enforce nutrition standards governing the types of food and beverages that may be sold on the premise of its school, and specify the time and place of each food or beverage may be sold. Along with the Wellness Committee, we have a couple meetings a year, next year we'll have a little bit more. All foods and beverages made available on school properties, including vending concessions à la carte and student stores during the regular and extended school day, will meet or exceed the district's nutritional standards, which are aligned with the Alliance for a Healthier Generation School Beverage and Competitive Food Guidelines. No foods or beverages, other than those associated with the district's food service program, are to be sold during the school hours. Prior to and during serving times, no food shall be sold to students at any location, including vending machines and school stores within the building, other than the lunchroom sales operated by the Food Service Department. All foods offered for sale during the school day will comply with the district's wellness policy and the district's nutritional standards. Basically, it just goes on to say, no food can be sold during the, the school day without meeting the regulations of the school food service guidelines. And you'll go on to the nutritional standards, basically, those are the beverages that we offer through the, in the secondaries, and those we meet with the Healthier Generation Guidelines. The same thing for the nutritional standards for the snack foods. Our board policies may need to be modified and updated to reflect compliance with both Senate Bill 210 and the Smart Snacks Regulations. We have a new administration at the White House, and a lot of these proposals are in place for the next school year, but they haven't been voted on, so some of the things that we're now saying may be changed for the new school year, 17 and 18.
11.6, renewal of the lease for the Maddix Modular Classrooms.
Before we go, I have a question for you. So on the, the regulations that we had before, did our, did what we make change a lot within the last two years?
Mainly, it's in food.
Food-wise, that's what I mean, yeah.
Oh, definitely, definitely. A lot of the meat guidelines of lower sodium affected all quality of the taste of a lot of products, so, yeah.
How did it affect the amount that our children ate?
Participation in that. We've got waivers for the whole brain measures, so regular hospital
So, and, and the thought is, as I've been following this, is that those regulations may be changed to allow for more palatable food?
More flexibility, a lot of the things
Okay, great, thank you.
There's a considerable amount of lobbying going on, I think there are like, you mentioned pasta, there's a couple others.
Both sodium and regulations are going to be like the target two for this year, and the, the proposed is the state of the target, which we need as you go along. The sodium targets are harder to meet, and a lot of the processors who make a lot of the foods are having trouble trying to meet those demands, and the third target area is like having a lean diet, so, it's going to be proposed to stay in the target level.
I know. Capital Conference, they had the, they were giving the best food that they possibly have, and it was horrible. So I can only imagine what the, I mean, it was, I mean.
National education community is working hard on that, but I'm understanding that a couple of those were executive orders that can be easily overturned. God, I mean, who knows what's really going to happen, but this, it could be one of them that would be rolled back, which would be a good thing, as my understanding is, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, 11.6 is the renewal of the modular classroom lease at Maddix Elementary. The district's requesting just a 10-month extension on this ponter unit at Maddix, the current lease expires at the end of June. The 10 months would take us through the end of the building project. We've met with Mr. Trailer and feel that the need for swing space while we're going through this is, is necessary, so by the end of April, it will be gone, there's no, no price increase on this for these 10 months. The Superintendent recommends the Board approve the extension of the lease, as we have scottman as presented. Now, on our favorite topic of change orders. 11.7 is Wilson Elementary. On all these change orders, I've provided the Board a lot of background information prior to the board meeting. So at 11.7, this is a change order to the change of scope and work being performed by Century Construction. Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change order submitted by Century Superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Century Construction's credit of $11,065. 11.8 is Turpin High School. This is related to the early site package work. We had to relocate a fire hydrant there. Superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Evans Landscaping Company in the amount of $1,200. Change order at Air Elementary School, we had to make a change on a size of a door that was installed at Air Elementary. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Endeavor Construction Company in the amount of $8,025. 11, let's see, yeah. 11.10 is Turpin High School. This is for Monarch Construction Company due to the change of scope in some of their work. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Monarch Construction Company in the amount of $5,849. Maddox Elementary, we have a change of, some of this increase in the scope of work being performed by Seaford Building Company. Superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Seaford Building Company in the amount of $102,708. The next is for Summit Elementary. This is related to work being performed by Mark Spalding Construction Company. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Mark Spalding Construction Company in the amount of $10,166. Next to last is Anderson High School. This is for a change of the scope of work being performed by Performance Construction Company. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Performance Construction in the amount of $30,404. And last of all is a change order for Wilson Elementary School. As a result of change in some of the scope of work being performed by Century Construction, superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Century Construction Company in the amount of $29,034.
Next up, curriculum, 12.1.
We have a few textbook adoptions to bring to you this evening. One for Family, Consumer, and Science, and one for Sociology. So, these books will be on display in our office until the June 26 board meeting, where we'll bring them back to you for a formal adoption. And the titles of those books are Guide to Good Food, Nutrition, and Food Preparation, The Developing Child, and Sociology: The Study of Human Relationships.
Thank you. Next up, Human Resources Report.
Item 13.1. Our first item is retirement. Kim Lumkul, 18 years, most recently at Anderson High School. Bev Wetterer, our Assistant Supervisor in Transportation, 40 years of service. We, of course, would like to wish them well as they move into the next phase of their lives. Item B, resignation. Mike Overby, our Principal at Anderson High School. Mike, I know you're here somewhere. Best wishes for your future. Continuing on, we have certified staff, a classified staff resignations. Item C, change of assignment for this school year. Item D, appointment, employment personnel items, again, for 1617. Item E, these are special service appointments. So these are the extra work items that you'll be seeing between now and over the summer. And those go on to page five, where you will find item F, appointment of coaches or advisors. Item G, substitutes for the remainder of this school year. Item H, a couple of change of assignments. Item I, a change in salary. Item J, which is the, covers items K and L appointments. Item K, we do see the appointments of two administrators. These are not new, not new FTE, but rather just a change in position. Certified staff, you will see the folks who will be joining us for the 1718 school year. Item K, special services appointments. Item M, reappointment of administrative contracts for two years. Item N, reappointment of personnel. Teachers are on pages nine through 13. Going on to page 13, these are non-teaching contracts. And they go to the top of page 15, where you will find a number of items that are also attached to your board docs. Item O, the administrator benefits document. Item P, the bus monitor salary schedule for 17 through 20. Item Q, exempt staff salary schedule for 2017 through 20. Item R, a kind of a miscellaneous salary schedule. Item S, other support persons. Item T, the supplemental salary schedule. Item U, the Forest Hills Teachers Association master contract. Item V, the OPEC 177 master contract. Item W, the OPEC 273 master contract. Item X, a job description for the Director of Technology and Innovation. This is a change. And then item Y, organizational chart. FTE, as you will note on either of the screens, has not changed, and we remain at 785.19. And I think, Scott, you were going to address some of the contract pieces?
On the contract pieces, I wanted to, on behalf of our administrative team, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in the process. It was sort of a hybrid, interest-based process that greatly reduced the length of negotiations as much as work was completed, because a lot of work in the process was completed ahead of time. All of our organizations came prepared with substantive, important items related to providing the best possibilities for students through well-designed labor management agreements. These agreements that we are bringing to the board this evening, they are three-year contract agreements proposed that ensures the stability of the school district and its finances over the next several years. The final economic agreements contained are within resource allocations that are budgeted and will not impact the assumed levy cycle of the district's five-year forecast. If approved this evening, Forest Hills will maintain area compensation competitiveness. This contract demonstrates board of education appreciation and support for staff within costs that maintain respect for the generous support derived from Forest Hills community. If approved this evening, the employees of Forest Hills will continue to realize competitive life, dental, and health benefits. Available part in due to the single-digit renewal percentages that we have seen over the last few years increases, these increases have been low through consortium pricing at SWOOSH. And for those of you who don't know what SWOOSH is, that's the Southwest Ohio Organization of School Health. I'd also like to thank the staff members that bargained on behalf of their colleagues. All three teams demonstrated respect for the climate of our community by working hard to craft sensible, competitive agreements. Bargaining is always bargaining. It's a very difficult process, and in this particular situation, we certainly length, or reduced the length of that process from what oftentimes is three months in other districts down to several weeks in this district, and that includes all three of the bargaining associations that we work with. And I would like to thank the board of education again for the parameters that they set and for their forethought and wisdom in regard to the five-year forecast, and again, maintaining that levy cycle as far out as we possibly can, and also making sure that our employees are competitive with those in the area. So, those are my comments regarding the negotiations and the way that they took place over the last couple of months. Thank you.
And I, too, would like to thank our organization. Our FHCA leadership is here this evening. Unfortunately, OPEC 177 or 273 could not be here, but it was a, it was a great, I don't know if you ever say great bargaining, but it was good bargaining session, and I also want to say thank you for that. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the HR report as presented.
Next up, we have Student Services.
Student Services has four items this evening, 14.1 to 14.4. 14.1 is a motion to approve 60 students and five chaperones from Anderson High School to travel to Columbus, Ohio, March 14th and 15th of next school year, 2018, to participate in the Ohio Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. The cost and transportation are included in this item. Item 14.2 is a motion to approve Turpin High School's one student and one chaperone from the Teaching Professions Great Oaks Group traveling to Phoenix, Arizona, June 23rd to the 26th of this year, to participate in the Educators Rising National Conference. And costs and travel are also included in this item. 14.3 is our motion to approve participation in the Special Instructional Services Agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center to provide the special instructional services that are attached in this, in the attachment, and this is to provide services to Forest Hills and auxiliary services to Immaculate Heart of Mary School here in our district. I would add that there are no changes to service with the exception of our speech and language and OT. We've done a trade-off and increased our occupational therapy and reduced our speech and language. So there are no changes from last school year for this upcoming 2017, 2018 school year. Item 14.4, Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services. This is a motion to approve the addendum to the agreement for their annual cost of $12,730.20 to Hamilton County DDS to provide the Part C mandated assessments that are required for children under the age of three who are Forest Hills students, Forest Hills residents inside in our district. The superintendent is recommending the board approve items 14.1 to 14.4.
Questions coming, sorry. Technology?
Item 15.1 is the HCC contract. They provide our student information system, as well as our EMIS financial services, our grade book, progress book, and IEP anywhere. So they provide a variety of services for us. The price has not increased. So, the cost for the 2017-18 school year is $126,874. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the HCC annual contract for services for July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $126,874.
Thank you. Next up, Treasury Report.
We're required at least twice a year, we usually take the forecasts in September, October, and January. Those were the variables that were really changing. How much has changed since January? So we are taking a five-year forecast that is the same forecast that we took in January. We will make significant, obviously, year-end changes to that, and we'll see another year move over our forecast. And like I said, the other things that will be in the next update will be in September and October. We'll have year-end revenue expenses, updated staffing, the employee agreements that we're asking for to approve tonight, incorporated in there. As we've said, they've not changed the levy cycle, but they will be incorporated in the right buckets, if you will. Some TIP revenue adjustments, and then the final full-day kindergarten tuition staffing, how that mix will come out. Those are the big things that are going to change the next time. But as required, we are taking a five-year forecast. And you want to note that we did have some relief. We did sell the tax anticipation notes. That will go, that did go into the permanent student fund, but that will give us some relief with some of the facility projects, which is allowing us to maintain the forecast cash flows and levy cycles that are predicted. I just recommend the board approve the five-year forecast with the assumptions for FY17 to And the Treasury Report, this time of year, heavy donations, over $25,000, great partnership with Mercy, our athletic boosters and PTA. You can see a list there of all the great donations and partnerships we have in the community. Item B, statement of board accounts, no issues there. We will be syncing up all of our accounts at year-end. We do have six federal funds that are waiting for a cash request to happen. No issues. We have a negative position on those until this month, next month. General fund receipts, still on target there. At month-end, we didn't have a TIP payment, but we have received it in May, so it's a little over $5 million. So that's pretty much right on what we had projected, so there's no impact for revenue at D and E or the general fund expenditures. Yeah, the one piece of note is, to be able to get through the year, we asked the board to approve increased appropriations, $4 million earlier this, earlier this year. We've not touched that. I had another need to touch that. It's still there, so it does show a larger under expenditure. Right now, we're running about 100% under spending, which is in line with previous years, but just so that, it's still there as a safety net, but we have not touched that appropriation. It's just, really, just in case if we encounter any other issues, and we need to cover that by year-end. F is our back reconciliation. G is our investment portfolio. H, a couple minor modifications to appropriations. And I, we're asking the board to approve support service fund expenses. So, all in all, we're asking the board to approve items 11.1 through 16.2 and 15.5.
I'd like to amend the motion. I'd like to move that we approve 11.2 to 16.2, except 11.13, which are the change orders from Performance Construction. I don't think 12.1 and 12.2 are being approved yet. Those are just being submitted, and we approve those.
Say it again?
I move to approve 11.2 to 16.2, except 11.13, and 12.1 and 12.2 are not actually motions.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Depper?
Mr. Prueman?
Yes.
Mr. Hemmelfarn?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
You need 11.13.
Can I get a move to approve 11.13?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Depper?
Yes. Mr. Hemmelfarn?
Yes.
Mr. Prueman?
Abstain.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes. Okay, now, reports to the Board of Education. Business Advisory Committee Report.
Do not have a meeting on May 11th as planned. We have a lot of conflicts, so right now, we move that to June 7th. So that's our next meeting, and then we won't be back until September.
And that is at the Administration Board?
At the Administration Board.
Curriculum and Student Services Committee Report.
There was no meeting. We reported last month.
Finance Committee Report?
The Forest Hills School District Finance Committee met Friday morning, May 12th, at 8:00 AM at the district office. We reviewed fiscal year '17 recap, general fund, the PI fund, building fund, the five-year forecast. We went into depth on that. A number of the key variables that affect the five-year forecast, as well as the state budget, negotiation, staffing, and facilities. Key observation was that the operating levy from March of 2012 was initially expected to last three years. That would have been '20, '14, '15, and '16. Even though funding from the state has been virtually flat, the district has stretched out the 2012 operating levy to last at least six years, which is terrific. Based on the way our state funds K through 12 education, when state funding is flat, any increases must be funded via new property tax levies. It's just the way the system works in Ohio. Based on our current projected expenses and assuming no increases in state funding, and that's optimistic, to think that we're not going to get cut. So, the assumption is that we're not, it'll be, funding will be flat. We'll be on the ballot, we would theoretically be on the ballot in 2019 with new operating revenue collected, starting in 2020, if supported by voters. We're actually fairly fortunate to have- We're actually fairly fortunate to have stretched this out for six years, and the only reason that hap, well, there are a number of reasons that happens. But one of the primary reasons is the ability for all parties involved to work together to make it work. We went through some tough budget years. I think it was 2009 and 2010 were the hatchet years from the state, where we took, we'd never taken cuts before. We took 18% cut and then a 11% cut. And that was particularly tough time, because we had to riff teachers. And that was one of the worst things that I've had to participate in, in the time I've been on the board. But over the past few years, because of everybody's ability to work together, and it, it was more than belt tightening, but it, but that's the reason, the, the community needs to understand that, that that is why we've been able to do this. One of the positive factors for taxpayers has been the elimination of taxes from the Nagel bond issue affected this year. Eliminating the taxes from the Nagel bond issue reduced the overall taxes that come to the Forest Hills School District by 1.69 mils. Unfortunately, that was probably eclipsed for most taxpayers by the safety and park levies. But nevertheless, then, you know, we're, we're doing our part. The other thing I want to mention, Rick mentioned the underspend. Appreciate the culture in the Forest Hills School District. In some government entities, there's money left over at the end of the year, the culture is spend it. That is not the culture in the Forest Hills School District, and it's part of the reason that we have been able to make things stretch a little farther and go a little bit longer, and not have to riff. So, again, it's people working together to do the right thing. So, that's, that's greatly appreciated, and everybody benefits from that. That was the extent of our Finance Committee meeting. We adjourned at 9:25.
You still up? Forest Hills Foundation Report?
On behalf of Julie, this is Jer who is on vacation this evening. The Forest Hills Foundation for Education Board met on May 10th. The foundation has raised $128,000 in 10 months, towards the year goal of $180,000 per year. Superintendent Preble reported at the board meeting, noting that the district's community update flyer will be in the mail to homes shortly. Facilities and building renovation status at all the schools. We reported on curriculum changes at Nagel, and anticipated board ratification of district collective bargaining agreements at this meeting. Community member Richard, and somebody needs to help me with this, Zirk?
Zirk.
Zirk, a parent of two daughters in the district, gave an innovation initiative presentation. He will have follow-up conversations with members of the Forest Hills Foundation Executive Committee, and the superintendent to term, to determine potential for an initiative, which is in line with the district's strategic vision. The 8th Annual Forest Hills Foundation 5K took place on May 13th. Approximately 2,000 people participated in the race, and there were hundreds of volunteers that helped make it happen. Many thanks to co-chairs Beth Davis and Jenny Nyack. Also, thanks to the many businesses that sponsored the event, Mercy Health, Wellington Orthopedic and Sports Medicine, Buckeye Running, Park National Bank, Energy Alliances, and Cincinnati's General, General Cincinnati Children's Hospital. Another item, the ATC Blitz took place at Anderson on May 18th, and at Turpin on May 19th. Important date to write down, the Sware for Success for this year will take place on October 14th at Wellington on 5 Mile. More details to come. Officers and board members were approved for the 2017, 18 year, including three new board members, Thomas Kritka, Barb Luke, and Kim Maurer. The 2017, 18 budget was approved, and the next meeting will be of the Forest Hills Foundation for Education Board will be June 14th at Ivy Hills. That's the report from the foundation.
And plus, they had a little run somewhere in there. Did you go over that?
5K?
5K, yeah.
I get it.
Okay. I'm going to get my Sware time. Human Resources Committee Report.
We did not meet this last month.
Legislative Liaison Report.
There's a lot going on, but the top line is, the House finished their work on the budget, they kicked it over to the Senate, and the Senate is just now starting to do, noodle it as they will do. There are a lot of key pieces of that that will impact K through 12 education, and more specifically, our school district. I reported on that last month, and so at this point, it's just a waiting game to see what comes out of the Senate, before they go to a reconciliation committee. And as people who watch this closely know, we have no idea what's really going to happen until probably about 11 o'clock on June 30th, when they are forced to pass a budget. But at this point, I think, Rick helped me out here, I think the hope is that we still don't, it doesn't look like we're going to take significant cuts. We'll be taking cuts in transportation, but...
Overall, it looks about even, which still, as I said, that's, that's a cut, but it's, it's funding, it should be flat. That's everything.
Some of the key issues are some of the things that the Alliance is working on, and Scott mentioned that earlier, so I won't repeat those. But a lot going on, but it's the old legend of sausage being made situation.
Policy Committee Report.
Policy Committee has not met since our meeting in April.
There was a second reading of policies, is that correct? I was waiting on that.
Sorry. Oh, that's right, we, from our meeting, we had our first reading, and today, we've got our second reading, which I believe then requires action. Actually, this is a whole list of them that was updated, I think every one of these were mandatory. I don't think we had options in any of them. This was a queen of them.
Right. So, the Superintendent, I recommend that the board approve the policies as shown in your attachments provided, that Mr. Smith just spoke of, as presented.
On behalf of Policy Committee, I move that we accept the, the policy changes listed in the board docs.
Second.
Mr. Depper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgaard?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes. Safety Committee Report. That was done last month. Forest Hills Teachers Association Report.
Let's say good evening, and Mr. Hamelgaard, thank you for your comments tonight, but I wanted to let you know, probably one of the highlights of my whole day today. One of the first people I met when I came to Forest Hills was Tony. He was our Athletic Director at Turpin High School. And this afternoon, when I was sitting in my team room at Nagel, a nice little young man, he was about four foot eight, the last time I saw him, walked into my room, and it was your son, Ben. All the jobs that you mentioned, and all the great things you've done for Forest Hills, you also have been a great dad. He was a nice young man, I'm so glad to see him today, and congratulations this weekend. I believe he's your youngest, isn't that correct?
Second youngest.
Second youngest, okay, well, good luck still.
One more to go.
So, congratulations, and thank you for that opportunity to serve us here in Forest Hills for many years. And again, you've got great kids, so that is a good thing to be saying as a parent. Tonight, my colleague, who's supposed to be with me, just jumped out of here real quick, is Mr. Armstrong, who is our delegate at large, which in Forest Hills Teacher Association, we have six executive committee members, and Dan's job is to serve for all of our state liaison meetings. Him and I attend many, but this one, he just went to our state RA, which was held a week ago. And just like you, Mr. Smith, kind of just reiterating the same things with budgets and so forth from the Ohio Education Association here. But probably one of the highlights for the Teacher Association in Ohio is that the communication between our president, Ms. Becky Higgins, and the state liaison teams has definitely changed and is going in a good direction. We also are very intent on looking at budgets, as well as one of the, one item that's definitely been taken off the table, is requiring teachers to serve a seven-day internship every summer, has been taken off. But also, tracking and looking at charter schools in Ohio is a big topic area for us. We'll maintain that and keep looking for that as we go through. The second item I have tonight is, I need to extend a truly, to Dr. Heis and Mr. Prebles, on behalf of the Forest Hills Teachers Association and our executive team, we want to extend our sincere appreciation to the board, and to the superintendent and his team, for their support and openness to create a collaborative contract. We've had, just as I think was mentioned with, through the board tonight, you know, some lean years. We've had some tough years, we've seen riffs, we've seen budget cuts, we've seen lots of things, we've seen go through that. And this last contract really showed an opportunity for the openness to create a collaborative contract. The changes that are presented, that you voted on this evening, it actually illustrates many years of building a long-term trust and commitment for years to come in Forest Hills. And in the end, what that creates is a collaborative work environment. It also creates trust, and a lot of futuristic ideas that are going to be great for our teachers, but also, more importantly, for the students and the community of Forest Hills. And with that, I'd like to make sure I let you know my appreciation from my team, and from the teachers in Forest Hills, and I look forward to having a great next couple of years here with us, seeing great things happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So, we, before we go to executive session, our next regular board meeting is on June 26th, and again, that will be at Nagel. We do not anticipate any action after our executive session. Thank you for coming.
Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session, for the purpose of considering the appointment, deployment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
Mr. Depper?
Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgaard?
Yes.
Yeah, and thank you, everybody, for coming.